Good evening. It is now 6:03 on August 4th. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have all councilors, with the exception of Andy West, will not be joining us, and James Steele will be joining us momentarily. At this time, we'll open it for public comment. Is there anything from the audience or anything online? Not hearing and not seeing anything, we will move on to item 110, consideration of the transient seller permit application from Cabean Philippine Foods. Have any representation? Is there a suggested motion from the council? Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor, thank you. And now we have James Steele joining us for item 111, discussion of potential community action grant projects. And this is something we've had ongoing for some time now. I believe that there was a meeting on August 1st with Community Resilience Partnership representatives. I'll turn it over to our town manager, Anthony Wilson.
Yeah, so Jim was part of that conversation, as was Aaron. So you guys please weigh in if I should misstate anything. But the discussion with the Community Resilience Partnership was, I thought, really encouraging. They said that we have a number of options available to us and that we can sort of queue up applications and projects for each of the upcoming grant cycles. So one of the things that they did talk about that was news to me, quite frankly, was that they do pay for weatherization of municipal facilities. And of course, we all know that we have a need for that right now in the ambulance station. Unfortunately, the timing of this doesn't really line up for that because the application is due August 29th. The grant monies won't be available until January, and we need to do something prior to this winter. And so Nick and I sort of, and I'm going to pass this around. Nick and I, this morning, just went over some different options for how we could pay for that project. We had previously sought three bids. The highest bid was from Breathable Homes, but that was the bid that we were most comfortable with. We were seeking a fourth bid. That bidder told us that their bid was going to be much higher than Breathable Homes' $71,000 bid. And so we told him, okay, we don't need that bid at this point. And our insurance company told us that we'll help put Humpty Dumpty back together again, but we're not going to pay for improvements in your facility to keep it from happening again. So what you have before you is, if you turn to that second page, those are currently capital reserves, all of which, other than the ambulance station, pretty dormant. So right now, we have $66,000 in the ambulance station. If you take the capital reserves for the landfill, and there's been no activity in any of these for a really long time. But if you take the landfill closure, the community mural, the school building, and the building security capital reserves, and those latter two really should be the responsibility of the schools, as opposed to the town, then you come up and you add that to the $66,000 already in the ambulance station reserve, then you come up with $115,000. So there are some different options for how we might be able to pay for that. That would be the first one, is that we simply take all of those monies, and we would need to come back at the next meeting and have you act on re-appropriating those funds. But we take all those monies, put them in the ambulance station capital reserve, and use that to pay for the insulation project at the ambulance station. The second is that we ended the FY '25 with a $1 million surplus. Almost all of that was in the, on the revenue side of the ledger. And so we could simply dip into our undesignated fund and pay for the project out of that, you know, $1 million. The other option is that we take, we spend all of the $66,000 in the capital reserve and then pay for the balance of the project from the undesignated fund. So to spray in, Breathable Homes has said to do the spray-in of the insulation is going to cost about $71,000.
With that, all the capital reserves that you presented to us there, it's $115,000. We definitely wouldn't need to reappropriate all those funds. We just need $71,000, correct?
That's true, but you know, we should probably allow for some sort of contingency with that.
No, I don't, I don't think you're wrong there.
And the only reason that we're proposing that, Jim, is because there's been no activity in any of those reserves. And so if we put it in the ambulance station reserve, we know it's going to be put to good public use because one of the things that we talked about last year is that parking lot is eventually going to need to be repaid.
And that means not ponying up anything to help with that $71,000? So that's on us?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm comfortable with either two ways. I mean, taking that from where we already have had stashed it away and using it because the ambulance, you know, reserve right now is $66,000. I mean, if we put even 20% contingency off $71,000, you're still within the ballpark of that number that you have there. And using it in, it's really appropriating that money for what it needs to be because it's capital reserves, it needs the improvement in that building. Would that quote, is that saying that's going to solve all our issues? Is that kind of the end of it? And then if we could do another resilience program grant, could we get an evaluation?
And so that's my recommendation.
Yep.
So we use those capital reserves to pay for the insulation in the ambulance station. We apply for the $75,000. The portion of that that we use for energy audits, we would still, as was discussed yesterday, we would still do an energy audit at the ambulance station just to see how effective that project has been and see if there's anything else that we need to address over there. And so what they told us was that we can conduct energy audits on the buildings that we've identified and then apply for future grants to actually implement the recommendations.
Take the action.
Yeah, from those energy audits. And I think that would be a smart thing for us to do, so.
Agreed.
So my recommendation is, apply for the grant, $75,000, and let's sort of stay the course of what we talked about at the last meeting, where we use some of those funds for an open space plan and then some of them for energy audits at the ambulance station, the police station, the library, the rec building.
What would you estimate some of those energy audits to cost? Because based on the young lady that was there with us at the energy audit talking about for our open space plan, she said probably an open space plan audit or evaluation would be around $35,000.
Well, I think Jill said that, that about $35,000. My research showed that a lot of the plans right now are costing $50,000. There was, in my background memo from the last meeting, there was one community that budgeted $35,000 and they wished that they had budgeted $50,000. I think with, and we could prioritize this, right? I think with the, if we allocate $50,000 to the open space plan, I think $25,000 will be sufficient for the energy audits for those other buildings. But we could still prioritize those. I would say ambulance station, police station, 1 and 2, recreation building 3, library 4, for the energy audits. And so if those, if those funds don't pay for all of that, then we just start slicing from the bottom. All the energy audits that I'm aware of that have been conducted on municipal facilities have been done by private contractors.
Aaron and Zach both had questions?
Well, I have a counterproposal.
Okay.
It might not even be counter, but my recommendation would be to utilize, appropriate the funds for the corrections as soon as possible using what you have drafted here. But then when we make the application for the energy audit, so I guess, I think if we decide, could we identify something that would maximize like $75,000?
I'm not following you.
Like within what we need, something we're going to budget for.
He's talking one item for the Community Resilience Grant. Could we have one item that would maximize that $75,000?
No, because remember, remember what they said. Like initially, we had thought that, okay, well, if we wanted to do the energy audits and then use the balance of that for, to implement the recommendations, they want, they want to see the energy audit first, and then we apply for funds to implement the recommendations.
So is your proposal right now, as it stands, to utilize or apply for the grant for the open space and energy audit?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and you're comfortable with finding the points and making the argument to get the, like, to get the top rated, if you will? Like, remember when we were talking about the percentages of rating? If you could, because if you utilize this and it freed up more money in our budget to tackle some other energy issue, we could tie those two together, it would make our application stronger. You get what I'm saying?
I do. And I have an idea, I mean, if we do the police station, we've already gone energy efficient there by installing heat pumps. So we can sort of say yes.
Okay, if you do it that way, then I'm perfectly fine with that. The only other thing I would say is, did you talk to Dr. Foley about these two 5?
I haven't, I haven't yet, I haven't yet. But those are town, those are town accounts.
I know, but.
If we, if we suggest, let me just say this. If we suggest that, hey, do you want this money? Do you need this money? Guess what the answer is going to be?
Right. I'm just saying, if we have the ability to replenish this, that's not a big issue. I mean, I looked at, I do think, is that an agenda item where we talk about what we have left over?
That's going to be part of the town manager's report tonight.
Okay, well, I was just going to kind of make a suggestion to tie it in with this, is that I am extremely comfortable leaving us at 18%, but this says we're at 20%. As currently holds a surplus greater than the required 20%.
Yes, but the difference with that, Aaron, is that if we, if we reduce that to 19% or we reduce it to 18%, then we have more monies to appropriate to capital reserves.
Comfortable. I think we should really consider that because we're behind. We're so behind on so many different things.
So, so we're going to get to that later in the meeting.
All right, all right.
Zach and Linda.
This is, might be a quick question. So you can't, we can't apply for the grant and then pay it upfront and then replenish it after, right? We can't like front the money here?
No.
We have to use the money.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no, that's why I was wondering if we could just apply it after. This is completely off-topic and, or not off-topic, but completely like out of pocket. Have we looked into like lowering, can you, I know there's code. Can you just lower the sprinkler? Isn't it just one fitting that would bring down the feed to lower below the drop ceiling, right?
To put it, to put it exposed in the building.
Yeah, yeah, and then you don't have to install $75,000. Yeah, exactly, yeah. You, all you'd have to do is extend your downpipes, right? So it would be, it could be cheaper than $75,000, right? You have your main pipes that are there, they're just threaded. So you just drop it below the ceiling with a fitting, and then you.
That was my thought, take the pipes out of the, out of the ceiling with there's no insulation, bring them down into the building.
So call it like 10 drops, but.
I see. Because if you remember, the building has had three separate renovations. Like this obviously has something to be able to do that way. I'm struggling to think what.
Well, we're just not looking for aesthetics, you know, either. So we just want functional.
Right, well, I mean, the only other way I could see is removing the drop.
No.
It would, only way I could see is like removing the drop ceiling and then having to deal with whatever is up there.
No, because I think what they would do, they would, they would probably disconnect the main, right? And then you disconnect all your drops, you slide out the pieces, you bring them in, and then you just put fittings like that over there. You make them longer because they threaded in, and you drop them below the whole ceiling. I would imagine that's cheaper than $75,000 for installation.
Even if you have to redo the ceiling, it's going to be cheaper than $75,000.
Spray. I don't think you have to redo the ceiling though. All you need is a two-inch hole saw and you go right through whatever you need to go through.
Always get one of those.
Yeah.
There is one other consideration, can we get that done before January?
Well, yeah, that's a question, yeah. But I was just, I was trying to think of how to save money there.
I mean, I just remember this project, it took a long time for the installation of this one right here. And of course, this would be more involved than it would be over the.
I don't think they have to take it apart though, all the way.
Well, that, the benefit of using this money for that project, it's not time reliant upon the grant. So I say we do this for the grant, and then that certainly could be something we look into.
Yeah.
It's not going to hurt.
Linda, you had a comment?
I just looked at Efficiency Main, industrial perspective initiative. Efficiency Main has programs for businesses of all sizes, including municipality buildings with three or more units and being largest energy. I will bet you 10 to 1 that these people will be.
Well, Efficiency Main doesn't actually do installation of.
Talking about the energy.
Oh, yeah.
So they're, they're using the same thing that some of these contractors are using, the lower test, the, you know, if the windows are, you know, leaking, I mean, they're.
Almost positive that's who utilized in the past when we did the original.
That's what I'm saying, it's going to be a lot cheaper using.
Did an energy audit, not like a, we did a literal energy.
About energy audits of $35,000.
We audited the lights, the fixtures, plugs.
I'd like to see what they are going to charge for that building.
So, so I'll be happy to check. But I, but I do think that, I mean, you know, a lot of towns now have done these energy audits. I would think that they would have gone through Efficiency Main if that were an option, but I'm happy to check. I know, I know, Linda, but, but there may be more to it than that.
James?
So, and thank you for, you know, inviting me up to that meeting the other night. It was very informational. And I did gain some other knowledge there. I kind of wanted to share with the council, and Aaron did too. They had some other interesting ideas with what we could do with this grant money. And it, and to me, sometimes grant money and the way they write things, it's, one thing that just piqued my interest was, we lose power in town. A lot of people lose power in town. They have that, what's it, 1,000 watt batteries that we could like leave at the fire station and they could charge them up. So when you have somebody who has a need or disabled and needs a power and doesn't have the affordability for a generator, we could loan those out and could set up a system. And they said it was, they were pretty, yeah, they're pretty inexpensive that, that we could have some of those on hand. I liked kind of partnering in some of, some of the stuff to, I want to utilize the money as best we can, all of it. So my thought is, I mean, open space plan, you know, if we set aside 50, should we write in a little bit, something else? Maybe if we have extra, put something, another initiative in that grant that we'd like to, anything left over, we'd like to go do X. Because I don't want anything left on the table, so to speak.
That's my concern.
And I think, I don't know, did Grania join us tonight?
She does not appear to be online.
Okay, so, I mean, that was another little thing. I mean, they talked about EV chargers, but I mean, as we talked to the gentleman who kind of was ahead of that piece of it, I just don't think that's even in the scope of this round. If we want to do the open space, we want to get energy audits, we want to do other little things. I really still think we need to do something with some of our sidewalks and making them safe. I mean, and I think if we look at the open space and also talking about a trail system from downtown to Pisgah, how's that looking? So they're basically just going to look at an evaluation? Is that what that, the $50,000, is that's just what that's going to do?
Well, and Don, you may need to help me with this, but they're going to inventory, first of all, what our open spaces are, identify potential uses of those open spaces, whether it be recreational, agricultural, conservation, whatever the case might be. And then there was one other thing.
Generally, they look at opportunities and need. So it's not just one thing, it wouldn't just be that trail.
No, no, no. And I know, it's like they talked, we talked about ball fields, we talked about trail systems, we talked about other things. I mean, I think at one time, I was talking to Zach, when we talked about putting a trail system from downtown through, down to the town beach. I mean, I've been here my whole life. I mean, I think there's sidewalks and stuff to get there, but I think, and I wouldn't want to invest too much money in that. But there's a building down there, and I don't know what it would take. Was that old gray apartment house, Steve Wood owned it down there. We talked about it.
One right next to the library.
Right next, well, just down from the library. And I don't know what it would take to procure that building, make it a town building, add parking because it would add to, to the point. And the, and we could actually run our trail system through there, we could widen that right through there. It's right beside Robert's Funeral Home, it's opposite, diagonal from it. It's that big gray apartment house. Is there any way for them to look at that and maybe, you know, adding this? And I think it's a B.
Can I say?
Acquiring these.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Sorry, Don Emerson, Town Planner, I forgot to say that. That is the type of thing that would be identified in the open space plan? So you're stating that one specific thing, and likely you'll want to have input and make sure that that is looked at? But that is definitely the type of thing, if there's an identified need.
Yeah, because just adding parking, I mean, we know the point needs, needs some help. We need to do some stuff down there. I mean, with that open space also for improvement, or the grant help us to do some trimming of the shrubs down there, making sure the shoreline looks decent. All these things, I think of, when I read that, the resilience grant, what we could do with the money. I just don't want to pigeonhole us on one thing. And I just, again, I want to make sure we utilize the whole amount. I don't want to leave anything on the table.
Honestly, Jim, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I mean, I honestly think if we do the open space plan and we do the, we do the four energy audits, I can't imagine if there's going to be much left over, but I will check into what the cost of those batteries were and see if we can include that sort of as a extra item. But I'll have to talk with Ashley about that, yeah.
I would like to recognize that we do have a resident in the audience that would like to speak. And we also have the Chair of the Conservation Commission here that I would like to invite to speak as well. If you'd like to come to the podium.
Just, just a couple of words, I guess, to piggyback off what you've been saying, Jim. Without a plan, we've got all kinds of great ideas coming out. There's more ways to spend this than, than Sunday. So, so I think it starts with a plan. And from there, we can identify the immediate needs. And it's, you know, like all plans, I'm sure it's a, it's a, it's an ongoing review and a live plan, right? But from, from that plan, I think you can then use it as a stepping stone for other grants, for grants that might be coming down the pipeline. But as long as you get your plan in place, that, that detail's out of the way. Because you can't come up with a plan like this in two weeks. You know, it's going to take time to do it right. It's, it's going to need your approval, obviously. And so there's, there's a lot, a lot of moving pieces to that plan. But as you've identified, you know, this is the first time I hear about that building, but that would be a great idea. But, but again, we want to be careful that this plan is not a mandate. It's not an ordinance, it's not, there's not, nothing regulatory about this plan. So we, you know, we're, we're looking at how to, even though I'm not on their team, I did get some help writing my letter this weekend from some of their team members. So there, there is, again, there is a need to identify moving the town forward without, again, coming up with 50 ideas and 50 different directions to go in. So thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate the work you guys are doing also, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susie, and we do appreciate your letter to the council.
Potential takings. Agree with that?
And as, I heard Anthony mention our, to take our inventory of town resources, and one of them is agricultural. So is the town going in, are we going to become farmers as a municipal?
So this is not about acquisition. It's not about acquisition. It's simply about identifying open spaces and identifying potential uses for those. So there may be prime farmland that the community would like to stay as prime farmland. And this is, well, wait, let me, let me finish because I got one, I think, really important point on that. And it was an original idea from Anthony Wilson. Steve McDermott mentioned this to me after our last conversation. It would have been really helpful to have had an open space plan prior to the discussion of solar ordinance and quarry ordinance. Because we could have built into both of those ordinances places where we don't want proliferation of either of those activities. And so now we see solar farms sort of popping up like dandelions across our community. And if we had had this plan in place, it might have identified, hey, this is prime farmland. This is places, these are places where we want to keep, you know, have the potential for recreation in the future. And thus, we are not going to put, have solar development on these properties.
Well, I am 100% with you on the whole solar idea as far as the fact that we don't want to use up our prime farmland for solar. But the fact of the matter is, they bought the property, they paid taxes on the property, they own the property. And we are right there gearing toward limiting the use of the property. That's exactly the direction that.
But the open space plan doesn't do that. It's a tool for the.
How do we do that? How do we?
It's a tool for the planning board to consider when it's writing the ordinance. And so, and so again.
Like we talked about last time.
Well, but.
To make the changes. These are the exact direction that I was going in last.
But Roy, as has been mentioned here, it carries no regulatory authority whatsoever. It simply provides options. It provides.
Provide the regulatory authority, to create the regulatory authority.
So we did have a raised hand, and we do have Amy at the podium.
Yeah, I was just going to, do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to also kind of go over the meeting we had the other night too and talk, kind of expand on and touch on, because this came up as a topic between the people involved there and the KV COG representative. So how I look at this is that the town, the people in the town and the community are really going to be the ones that determine the fate and kind of how we move forward regardless in the community. But if we don't have, this is just a basic groundwork to develop, basically just to say, this is what's here, this is what's not here. And this then can be used as a tool to apply for funding to make improvements that we want to see in open, you know, whether it's trail systems, sidewalks. And then you can attach it to other things, such as integrating it in with feasibility studies of whether flooding areas or housing development, stuff like that. You can integrate it and prioritize where the town would like to see those resources. Or you might even be able to say, the town doesn't have the ability to, you know, kind of absorb those type of resources. That's kind of how I look at it. I think, I think it's something we need. We've been lacking for many, many years.
I'm Amy Hughes, I'm with the Conservation Commission. And I just have, I think most everything that needs to be said about the open space plan has been said. I'd just like to make a couple of points. One is that if we, if we have an open space plan, it opens up the opportunities for eligibility for lots of other grants, trail riding, trail making, snowmobile trails and so on. That there, the possibilities are endless. The other thing is, I'm a long-term, over 30-year employee of the legal office at the Department of Transportation, and I'm familiar with eminent domain. This document, it's not regulatory, it's not statutory, it's not constitutional. It's simply, as Aaron said, and Anthony has said, it's a plan. There's no power in it for the town to take property at all.
My fear is it becomes a tool in order to do stuff like.
It's not a tool.
You can't, you can't do that, that's prime farmland there. You can't do that over here because you're in a deer habitat. You can't put that development in.
No, that's not what it does. It's a, it's a planning device. It's not a regulatory device. And only the state and town and the federal government have, have the power of eminent domain. And in order, you have to prove a public exigency.
I'm not scared of eminent domain, that's not my concern. My concern is the influence that this is going to have.
That's what, excuse me, that's what you're saying that it amounts to?
No, that's a not at all what I'm saying.
Domain, it's, this is not regulations. I don't know how else to put it.
I'm saying.
It's not eminent domain, it's not a statute.
Very simply this. I'm saying that the results of this plan and the inventory that we have in land will influence. Will influence decisions made by our planning board.
And what can the decisions be?
Well, we just talked about.
Just talking about buying or taking the apartment house down by the beach for public parking. Are you going to exercise eminent domain for that?
Absolutely not. No, it's not. It wasn't my plan. The taking, I don't, taking, I don't think would be the right word. I think acquiring, possibly purchasing through the town, if the owner wants to sell it.
The open space plan talks about acquisitions. In order to acquire it, you'd have to broker a deal. You'd have to pay just compensation.
I understand what you're saying. As far, I mean, you're advocating for this plan. I'm playing, I'm playing on the, you know, kind of devil's advocate in this.
What I'm telling you is, someone who's familiar with the process of eminent domain, it's a very.
It's not eminent domain that I'm scared of, though. It's within this town, within the planning board, within, it's the influence that this document will have on future decisions long after us.
That's not what this document proposes to do. It's a plan. When it comes down to a vote on whether the town wants to exercise eminent domain in order to take somebody.
Not eminent domain.
What else are you calling it?
We do have another question online. Timothy Adams.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Yeah, so I guess to start out, I've only lived here for just over three years now. But the one thing that I've noticed about this community is that you have unbelievable bodies of water in this area and unbelievable outdoor recreation activities. But access to them, I think, could definitely be better and improved across the board. There's not a road that I've driven down out here that doesn't have a Winthrop Place outside sign. And I think we are selling ourselves short as a community if we do not have an open space plan to even identify the potential that this town and the surrounding community has to offer residents. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, by the way. You're doing a wonderful job because your charge is conservation. So, you know, regardless if there's a difference of opinion on different things, you're representing what you're supposed to. And I have no doubt that Roy appreciates that, too. But I do, I understand what you're saying, too. He's afraid that there would be a movement among maybe a group that then would utilize the open space plan to advocate for a much more stringent restrictive use on property and private property, which, as long as I'm here, that'll never happen. Just saying that.
But this plot has the power.
Correct. And that's why, yep, exactly. And we're the check and balances to that. And we represent the interests of the citizens. So, you know, if they end up, if the majority of the town decided they wanted to do it, guess what? It's going to happen. But I don't think that's what they want to do. I do think that it is extremely important that we have the ability, and some, and Tim touched on it, we have this very fractured space. This town has, you know, we have different areas of recreation opportunities or abilities, whether it's private, you know, like some of the camps that we have in town, or the school versus just the town rec department and some of the properties that have been donated, such as the Garrett property, whether it's off Ramblere Drive, that was set aside when the school first got built up there, that hasn't been utilized. We still have the softball field down by the train tracks that is not being utilized. And now we have the development of the sports complex. And I think moving forward, we need to find a way to bring this all together. So that way, when we have to make decisions moving forward, or an organization who wants to do a development like the sports complex comes into town, we have the ability to point to something and say, okay, we can work off of this. So that's my, where I see the value in this.
James, and then Linda, and then.
So. And again, they explained it, and I think I'm getting better understanding of the whole plan, but I still have questions of somebody coming to do a evaluation. It seems like a lot of money for somebody to do an evaluation. But can we identify in an evaluation what we'd like to see? So let me give you just an example, just so then you can answer. So, you know, so if we say, hey, we'd like you to identify in this plan ball fields, snowmobile trails, biking trails, horse riding trails, ATV trails, which we don't really have in here, but a lot of towns are adopting it because UTVs, ATVs are starting to become more popular. So those are the things I would like to say. These are the things we want you to focus on versus maybe trying to preserve property, because that may be kind of some of the us that are a little nervous about that, what may become regulatory. And I know you say it's not, but I'm just, again, we may not be here. I may not be here next, you know, come November. So, but, I mean, and I want to make mention, because Steve mentioned the firehouse field. We got to be careful about firehouse field, because I believe that was donated to use as a ball field. And if it was anything else, it goes back to the owner there. So I know, because I know we talked about that. So maybe upgrading it to something a little bit better, or what have you. But I mean, is that a possibility of saying, this is what we'd like to see versus what, have them offer suggestions what they may have?
So yes, that's just a matter of how we craft the request for proposals. And in fact, Dawn and I met previously with the Kennebec Land Trust. And one of the things, and we were talking about how we could affect some connector trails, especially to the Pisgah area. And one of the things that the Kennebec Land Trust sort of advised us was in this grant application, and then, you know, if we issue an RFP for this, is that we stress those sorts of activities. So I think, I think we can say, yeah, we want an open space plan, and we want to pay particular attention to these types of efforts.
Yeah, these events that we would like to see. Because, again, those, I mean, I was involved a long time ago, when he was little, about the ball fields going up Ramblere Road. And that's property that just went, fell on deaf ears because of the cost. But, and then we could apply for another grant if they identify it as a ball field, recreation of soccer, in any, any type of open space that we could utilize that the town owns right now. But we're not doing anything with it.
Yeah, I am aware that the town of Reedfield has done something similar to that in the recent past.
Thanks.
Linda, and then Zach.
I was gonna say is, if folks are adopting something like this, I think we need to put in there the concerns that the council has with respect to not using this as a tool to direct property owners to do whatever it is with their properties, or for us taking, you know, that's, I think that's something that needs to go in there, so that it's stated that those concerns have been addressed. And that is not the intent of this open space plan.
So in order to allay any concerns like that, I'm going to commit right now that whatever draft of an RFP that we come up with, we'll share that with the Conservation Commission, gather their input, and share that with the council as well, and gather your input.
Zach.
Yeah, that was, that was basically my question. If you're going to do an RFP, then if we can just be part of it, and we can add in to, I mean, ideal, I got a right one tonight, actually. So, so if we can be part of that, I think we could collectively get all the parameters that we have, because like Aaron was mentioning, like tax things we might want to look at. I don't know if we can, right? There's some stuff we might not dig deep into. But if we can all be part of the RFP, and I got to go look at the Bridgerton, and you said Freiberg? Yeah. As a go-bys, because I haven't seen it as what it's going to look like. I have an idea. Yeah.
Yeah. In the, in the last pack that you got, there was a link to the.
Was there?
Plan.
Okay.
Then.
All right.
I'll go look.
Now, there was the meeting last Friday. We've had a couple of discussions on this. You're looking at getting this completed around the 19th. And so our next meeting is on the 18th. I'm sure you'd like to have a decision before then. Is that something that you want us to move forward with right now?
Yeah, I, we really needed a decision tonight as to whether or not you're, and it doesn't need to necessarily be a form of vote, just a marching order, say, yeah, Anthony, go ahead and craft the application for these projects.
Yes. And another point I meant to kind of clear this up is, Zach, is I think this will also give us an opportunity to be able to say, what percentage of property in town have we lost property tax to because of conservation and like the land trusts? And, you know, where we may want to avoid that in the future, too, or look at a percentage and stuff. So that might be for, yeah, for revenue. But I think you're fine to go ahead with what you proposed.
I'm good with the 25% for the energy audit and the 50%, or excuse me, 50,000, not percentages, for the open space. Thank you.
I think we need to check on the energy efficiency.
I will, I will, I will check.
Like to hear what they have to say. I can bet it's a lot less.
I will check on that first thing tomorrow. And as soon as I have an answer, I'll email all you guys and let you know what the options are there.
James had said, if you find that they have, you know, you come in something, you wiggle room somewhere else, feel it.
Yeah.
With some of those batteries.
Yeah. And it was, it was an idea, actually, I guess it was Steve who asked if they'd come across anything really innovative, and that's what they talked about. And it was an interesting, good public service idea.
Even if we had a few of them as a kind of a pilot.
Right.
Yeah, just as loners and just to try it out.
All right. Anything else? We good?
I hope so.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming and making your presentations, and for those online who have spoken up and given some insight. Moving on to item 112, consideration of approval of the minutes of the July 7th, July 17th, and July 21st council meetings.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Me or Aaron?
But Aaron. Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor. Thank you. Item 108, tabled from the July 21st, 2025 meeting, consideration of the June 2025 disbursement warrants.
Move to approve the disbursement warrants for June 2025?
Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor. Item 113, consideration of recommendations from the Appointments Committee. We have Matthew Nato for the Downtown Revitalization Committee, a renewal with the term of expiration of December 31st, 2027.
I meant, I move to approve, actually, you, go ahead. You're ahead of it. But yeah, I moved to confirm the recommendation to the Appointments Committee. Is it Matthew Neto? Neto, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor. Thank you. So now we will turn over to other businesses. Is there any other public comment from the audience or anyone online? Hearing nothing, we'll turn it over to the Town Manager's Report.
All right. So I emailed you guys a little earlier today. We've been looking, well, this gets, this gets back to the point Aaron was raising earlier. We had a $1 million or plus on the revenue side of the budget this year. Linda, you'll be very happy to know that of the $21 million budget, all but $31,000 of that was spent this year. No, 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 I want to. Last year, you were concerned that we had over budgeted. We budgeted as closely as we possibly could this year. Okay.
We shouldn't be taxing the citizens more than we're.
Well, we didn't. So, okay, good. So, so.
Pay attention for the.
So we, we generated $1 million more than what we anticipated. $400,000 of that was interest earnings. And so, you know, that's a really hard thing to try to project. And we were, we did it more aggressively than we have in the past, but we still went way over revenue budget with that, which is good. And, you know, and right now with interest rates remaining where they are, we should see some healthy interest earnings in FY26 as well. Another $200,000 of that was related to vehicle excise tax. And we just registered more cars, probably more newer cars than, than what we had projected, which again is good. So we are able to, if we want to meet the policy and achieve a 20% undesignated fund, 20% of operating expenses, that would leave us with about $600,000 to appropriate to our capital reserves. Last year, the percent for the undesignated fund was 18%. If we left it at 18%, then we'd realize the whole of that $1 million that we could then appropriate to the capital reserves. If you wanted to take a phased approach and raise it from 18% to 19%, then that would leave $814,000 to reappropriate to capital reserves. At this point, that would probably be my recommendation. We're not asking for a decision tonight, but I just wanted to present this to you so that you could start thinking about how you want to approach that. We'll probably come back to you in September with looking for some action from you so that we can reappropriate those funds, move them into the assigned fund balance for capital reserves. And from there, then we can decide how we want to divvy it up among the capital reserves. So, so all in all, you know, it's great news, because we're going to have somewhere between $600,000 and $1 million to appropriate to our capital reserves. It's just a matter of how aggressively you want to move in trying to meet the 20% fund balance for the, for the policy. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Not any questions, just my thoughts on it. I think, given the revenue projections and results that we got this year, knowing that we have not maximized revenue for our communication center or our EMS department, I'm comfortable, I think we need to be aggressive with our capital improvements, given there's been just so much neglect over the last few years. So we can try to get ahead of it, because I don't, I don't see those projects getting cheaper. So I think I'm comfortable with waiting till next year, because I think we'll have enough to be able to get to 20% next year, to be honest.
To your point, you're right. I mean, we're doing a phased-in approach, not with dispatch, but with the ambulance service subsidies. And so the towns that we serve with our ambulance service outside of Winthrop are going to pay more next year than what they're paying this year.
Okay.
Thinking about the revaluation, when is that expected to be complete?
2027.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so in other news, I emailed you guys about this last week, I believe. Nick and I met with the safety consultant who is going to help us qualify for the SHAPE program. That will yield at a minimum a $23,000 a year savings in our workers' comp premium. The cost for her services the first year is $7,000. After that, it'll be less, because there's a lot of work to do on the front end of doing that. So I haven't heard any objections, so my intention is to go ahead and sign that. I think it's going to be beneficial, not only because it's going to reduce our premium, but it's going to hopefully help us to have a safer workplace. So we'll have less absenteeism, and hopefully less experience as far as filing claims related to workers' comp. So I think that's going to be beneficial in a whole lot of ways for the, for the town. Yes, yes. So, so if we qualify for that SHAPE program, and it may take us, she warned us, it may take us a couple of years to get there, we will save a full 10% on our workers' comp premium. Just a reminder, nomination papers are still available right now. We've had two candidates thus far take out papers, one for the Town Council and one for the Library Board of Trustees. At our next meeting, we will have a presentation from Chief Moretto about our ambulance fleet. So he'll come to you with some recommendations. We're also going to bring to you, and I'll probably send this to you maybe as soon as tomorrow, some proposed changes to our administrative code. So as we're going through the charter, we know that the charter does make reference to the administrative code, which I was unfamiliar with. So we hunted it down, and it was written in 1987. It was amended in 1990 and has not been touched in 35 years since then. So, so as we're approaching the codification of all of our ordinances, it would be good to have that in better shape than what it is right now. So we're going to bring it to you so that you can take a look at it, offer your thoughts, and then we'll go back to the attorneys and see what they think about that. And then we'll move forward as far as just updating the administrative code. Let's see. Oh, also at the next meeting, there's going to be a proposal to move a trunk or treat to the municipal lot, which would involve closing Union Street for about three and a half hours on Halloween afternoon and into the early evening. So Lonnie and probably Sergeant Delaney from the Police Department will be here to talk with you about that. We need to talk about our September meeting dates, because our, the first Monday in September, obviously, is later. obviously, is Labor Day, so we're not planning on meeting that day. I will actually be returning from vacation the day after that. And so I had proposed that maybe we either move the, the two meeting dates to the 15th and to the 29th, or only have one meeting in September, which Shannon responded back, and she was good with that, if we just wanted to meet on the 22nd. So, just meeting one time and make it on the 27th.
Go on, anyway, the, probably the 15th.
Oh, on September? I'm rethinking when we should have that meeting. So, okay, so we'll, we'll schedule it for the, for the 22nd. So, speaking of my vacation, so I will be, I will be out August 20th through September the 2nd. I'm also going to be off, out of the office this Friday as well. It's the first one I've had in six months. And, and next week, I will be at the Main Town and City Managers Association annual meeting from Wednesday through Friday, doing some training. I mentioned the charter earlier. We had our first Charter Commission meeting last week, and a couple of you attended that meeting, and they elected their officers. They set the next scheduled date for August the 12th. We will have our public hearing as required by law to gather citizen input. I worked on some materials today that we're going to hopefully put out as soon as tomorrow to help inform people about what a charter is, why it's important, and what this review and revision process consists of. A little like two-page Q and A, essentially, on that. We're also asking the town's attorney to come, and he is going to provide a little primer for people to sort of prime the pump about those topics that I just mentioned. And then he'll be available to answer the Charter Commission's questions after that. Say again?
Town Attorney Phil in.
Well, except it won't be a Phil Sosher. He was already double booked that night, so he'll be another Bernstein Schur associate. So, so, so that'll be on the 12th at 6:00 PM. Of course, if you want to come, we'd, we'd love to have you. I mentioned about the year-end budget, and we've talked about the ambulance station. So I have two other things. Our Public Works Director has been looking about how we could potentially get purchased gravel a little bit more cheaply. So what he would like to do is use $26,000 out of the drainage account and use it to purchase gravel from the town of Monmouth. So the town of Monmouth has its own gravel, so it purchases the material, then hires someone to actually crush it for them. And they can do that for, the cost of that would be, let's see here, it's $13 per yard, whereas presently, we pay $23 per yard. So it'd be a savings of $10 per yard for gravel. I think this would be in the best interest of the town, and rather than putting it out to bid, you know, we do have in the purchasing policy that if it's in the town's best interest, you guys can make that decision. So I'm here to see if that's something you want us to pursue. I, I don't know.
I say.
I still think it's.
Yeah, I'm, I would imagine it is, but I'll, I'll double check on that. Obviously, if we're paying the, the 23 would be. Is it still 13? No, we could, we could go and pick it. Oh, oh, you're asking if, if they would bring it to us? Yeah, Monmouth is not, as much as they love us, I don't think that they're going to do that for us, but. I'll, I'll make sure it's apples to apples.
I think the concern is $10 a yard, and we are using our employees, our fuel, our trucks. It goes up even, even though it's not huge, it still goes up per yard by a fair amount.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, like Jim said, I'll, I'll check to make sure that the 13 and the 23 is the same level of service. And then lastly, our town clerk would like to close the clerk's office for two days, August 27th and October 8th, in order so that our staff can go and get trained on the new laws related to elections. And, and there's also some vital record law updates. So that'll be on the 27th. And then October 8th is the first day of the MMA Convention, and the Main Town Clerks Association also has some training at those things that she thinks would be beneficial to the staff. She, she wrote to me today and said, it's vital that we are all up to date with law changes, and it will allow the deputies to earn important points toward their clerk certification. So, August 27th and October the 8th. And, and I'm, and I want to talk about it now, simply because if we're going to do this, we want to give people ample, ample.
Is it going to be full days?
Yes.
My only concern is those are our long days, Wednesdays.
So what if we, what if we, what if we end publicizing it? What if we did a long day, either the day before or the day after?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, the thing is, we got to get these guys up to speed.
Understand that. No, I'm just saying.
In fact, in front of you, some of you, some of you get it mailed to you, but you have your Town and City Magazine, and it is thicker than normal, and it's like almost all like new laws. So you can look through that and see all the new laws that, that we need to familiarize ourselves with. That's all I have.
So, I just want to comment on what you were talking about, our surplus. And I'm inclined to really lean towards and just kind of give you my feel on it, and whoever's listening wants to hear what Jim Steele thinks. I really like to keep us at 18%. I'd rather use that surplus we have and put it into the capital reserves. I just think it would be better well-served, and I think we can ride at 18% and would be fine. So this is my quick thoughts on that. And any news on the communications towers? I know you gave us a week, almost two weeks ago about the grant money, and they're looking really good.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about the grant money, but I will tell you that the Police Department has gotten a bid from, or an estimate from a company, and it, and to extend that tower up to 190 feet, which is essentially like 100 feet taller than it is right now, is going to cost approximately $250,000, which is only about a third of the cost that, that our consultants thought that it might cost. So that's good news.
We're building a whole new one.
No, no, we'll just extend.
That same location, because that's what we bought the land for. So my other question towards that, are we still looking at, once we get this in place, have we figured out a rate that we're going to charge other towns?
No, because.
For our services.
We still want to, we still want to run the numbers.
Yep.
Because if, if you were on the Wayne Select Board, for instance, probably one of your first questions would be, well, how much is this going to cost us? And we don't know yet. But we have let all the towns know that we're doing this and that they're.
Because we need to come up with a, there has to be a formula, right? So, so no matter what it costs, there has to be something built in as, for, you know, a formula, you know, for to get the metrics down, so.
Yeah, absolutely. But just to temper expectations, the, the majority of the cost is, is sort of Winthrop specific, because we're going to be replacing all of our radios, for instance.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
But the, the things that will serve all of the communities, those are things that we'll figure out how to divvy up the cost.
Yeah, because I know they've been kind of, lack of a better word, been riding on our, our shoulders on that one for a while now, and it's time for them to tie into it, especially if we're getting a decent system that's going to be actually beneficial to the other communities.
I will say this, when we, when we increased the rates for dispatch, only one of the seven communities that we served had concerns about that. I think all the rest of them recognized both the value and the service that we provide instead.
When we look at those formulas, do we factor anything in for the administration of the?
Yes. So, so, so those formulas are.
Talking for Winthrop specific, our, our cost that none of the other towns have, do we factor anything in there for us?
Yes. So, so when we do that, Roy, it is based upon the, the total cost of the dispatch center. So, you know, so, you know, Bill Sullivan, for instance, his salary figures into that.
Yeah, I just, it's my, like with any, anywhere else in business, if somebody's got one, you know, something that they're, you know, they're, they're in a group, you got one person or one organization, you know, administering it, running it, you know, doing all the stuff that the other, other towns don't have, usually they're, you know, a slight lesser rate than the other communities per capita.
Yeah.
Or per person or whatever. And I just think if anything dollar-wise per capita, I think would ought to be making out rather than losing.
Not to drag it on, a couple more things. No, you're fine. How are we doing with our negotiations with the Police Department?
Haven't heard anything from the union.
To either one of them? Okay. And then the last thing is, thank you for this, or thank you for Tavis and Craig Hickman for the GA stuff. Are we getting any pushback? Not that we should. How's the ZISC house?
Haven't heard anything from, from those folks about this. So, so whether, I would assume that they're aware of it, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron?
It was just two things. One, is it possible to get kind of an update on where the school sits before they start into September? Financially, and the plans, and maybe Dr. Foley or someone give us an update?
I tell you what. So, yes, so I tell you what, if you have specific, I'll be happy to invite her at the next meeting, because that's kind of our workshop meeting. So if you'll send me specific questions that you have, that way she can come prepared.
No problem. One of them being the buses. I just was hoping to get an update on that. I just, I know they're still there, so I just, anyways. And then if I can remember the other thing, but I can't, it went out of my head.
We can come back if you'd like.
Speaking of which, in case you folks hadn't heard, but there was a new school board member that was appointed last week. And please don't ask me who that person's name is, because I don't know. But, but they did appoint someone, and I'm told as part of that interview process, that person did express an interest in actually running for the seat come, come November.
The. Send them, and then, oh, hope I do.
Okay.
Pavement. Are we paving this summer?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a list of those roads? Because I don't remember. Okay, thanks. He probably did. I just lost it. Thanks. Schedule, I guess, yeah.
And then I just, I just wanted to kind of touch back on the comprehensive plan implementation. We had gotten a presentation from them some time back, and then they had an ask, had an ask of us to kind of go over those implementation strategies for the council. I think we've provided those yet to them. If our schedule is not too heavy on the next meeting, is that something we could talk about?
I tell you what, yeah. So we'll, we'll try to keep it light, and then you guys can work on your spreadsheet if you like. And in fact, it might be helpful, I'll send you my spreadsheet, because a lot of, almost everything that I'm listed on, you guys are listed on, and so you can sort of see what, what my take was on. It asked for three things. One was sort of what you feel like your priorities are. The other was, where are you on some of those? If there's been any progress made, or if not, what's holding that up? And then lastly, just commenting on any of the recommendations you wanted to beyond those two items.
Anything else from the council? All right. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned at 7:06. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Amy.